Adrian N. Brightfelder, City Clerk, you are hereby directed to call a regular session of the City Council to be held on Monday, January 6, 2025, at 6:30 PM in the historic Federal Building for the purpose of conducting such business that may properly come before the City Council.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to a regular session of the Dubuque City Council for January 6, 2025. As a reminder to our participants, you can provide in-person input or virtual audio and written input during the sections of the agenda where public input is accepted. Input options during the live meeting include: In-person attendees may approach the podium when the mayor asks if there is any public input on the item they would like to speak to. Remote attendees can log into GoToMeeting using the login links, phone numbers, and access code that appear on the broadcast and livestream and posted on the front page of the meeting agenda. This option includes audio input and written chat input. If you are participating via computer, indicate which item you would like to speak to in the chat function, or note that you would like to speak during the appropriate section. If you are participating via phone, indicate which item you would like to speak to during the appropriate section. All comments, whether in-person or virtual, must be accompanied by a name and address. Additionally, written public input is accepted by contacting the City Council directly from the city's webpage at www.cityofdubuque.org/councilcontacts and through the City Clerk's Office email at ctyclerk@cityofdubuque.org. This information will be reiterated during the meeting. Attendance for the session is as follows: Mayor Kavanaugh.
Here.
Council members Farber.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Resnick.
Here.
Russell.
Here.
Sprank.
Here.
Wethel.
Here.
City Manager Van Milligan.
Here.
And City Attorney Brumwell.
Here.
Thank you, Mayor Kavanaugh. I will turn it over to you for the Pledge of Legions.
Thank you, Adrian. Well, Happy New Year, everybody. Welcome, and please rise for the Pledge of Legions if you are able.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first proclamation this evening is Waller Catholic High School, 2024 Iowa Class 3A Football Champions.
All right, well, Coach Marshall, and it looks to me like the entire team, if not most of the team here, come on up and if you'd like to say a few words before I read the proclamation, feel free.
I think they wanted to come up behind you.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. Thank you for this memorable proclamation. I'm Jamie Marshall, Assistant Principal and Head Football Coach at Waller Catholic High School. I'm joined tonight by my assistant coaches and also the athletes, our student athletes from our football team. Wanted to take a moment to express our appreciation for an incredible support the Waller Football Program received during our record season and our playoff run to an historic state championship. The outpouring of enthusiasm from our community through your cheers at our games and the unwavering encouragement meant the world to our team. You made every moment of this journey unforgettable. We also are grateful to Loris College for our continued partnership for our home games, the University of Dubuque, and the Dubuque Community School District for allowing us to use their facilities for quality practices late in the season. Your support ensured that we had the resources needed to perform at our best when our best was needed. I'd also like to specifically thank the community leaders and the supporters who went above and beyond to create lifelong memories for our team. The police escort, both as we left town and when we returned as state champions, was an extraordinary experience that will stay with these young men forever. A special thank you to Councilwoman Katie Wethel for her support for this proclamation and recognition. What an honor and an experience for our team to attend tonight's City Council meeting. This championship wasn't just a victory for Waller, it was a celebration of what happens when a community comes together to support its young student athletes. When families and community leaders demonstrate caring commitment to our youth, regardless of our school they attend, it shows what is possible. It reinforces that success is shared, memories are made through unity and support. On behalf of the Waller Golden Eagle Football Family, thank you for this recognition tonight and making our journey a lifetime of memories.
Coach, that was very well stated. I don't know if I'd have much more to add than that. I do have a proclamation that I'll read, but this is a great way to start the year, guys. So, thank you very much for being here. Congratulations on a fantastic season. We are all proud of you as a city. What's it feel like to have a whole city being all proud of you like that? It's actually a pretty great feeling, isn't it? And we're going to make sure that we get a good picture when we're all done here, too, so you can come up. Hopefully, we're all tall enough to be over top of you if we stay up here and you can line up in front of us after we read the proclamation. And of course, we really want to see the trophy, so you'll have to bring that up, too. All right. City Dubuque Proclamation. Whereas Waller Catholic High School's football team has had a remarkable 2024 season and brought home the Class 3A 2024 Iowa State Football Championship on Friday, November 22, 2024. And whereas that championship earned Waller Catholic their first football championship in the history of Holy Family Catholic Schools and the city of Dubuque's second state football championship since 1979. And whereas the championship was won at the conclusion of a four-game run within a 16-team field, where the Golden Eagles defeated Humboldt by a final score of 49 to 14 on November 22. And whereas in achieving this victory, Waller Catholics players and coaches have brought an enormous amount of pride to our community and our city, displaying sportsmanship, exceptional dedication, and commitment. At the conclusion of the championship, Waller Catholic ended with a program-best 13-0 record. Now therefore, I, Brad M. Kavanaugh, Mayor of the city of Dubuque, Iowa, on behalf of the City Council staff and residents of Dubuque, do hereby recognize the Waller Catholic Football Team as the 2024 Iowa Class 3A Football Champions. Come on up, guys. Congratulations. Come on in, everybody.
They are taller than I am.
Yep. Make sure you can get in the middle there so you can see him, right? It's not often that we get a group this large.
You guys are taller than our usual.
You got to know, yeah, perfect. Excellent.
All right, guys, let's see. You know what those?
He's looking nice and motherly.
Proud mother.
All right. Hey, Coach! Coach, I got the proclamation for you. This is yours now. Yeah. Hey, congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thanks a lot for being here.
Thanks for being here, for getting over here.
Hey! Long ago.
How you doing? Congratulations.
Good to see you.
Oh, my gosh. Yeah, thanks for coming.
Congratulations. Yeah, I know. Anytime. Good to see you.
Oh, the trophy!
Oh, yeah, you got a show. Thank you very much. That is cool.
That's great.
That is cool. That's awesome. We just got to be able to touch it. That's cool. You know what I mean? That's fantastic.
Or just the name of the school.
Nice.
Thanks for bringing that back, guys.
Proud moment.
Nice luck. Congrats. Thank you.
I see some cheerleaders out there, and the band might find a little marching.
All right, Adrian, I think we're ready for our next proclamation.
Our second proclamation is Human Trafficking and Modern Day Slavery Prevention Month.
And I see Sister Mary Lechtenberg here to accept this proclamation, say a few words. Thanks for coming tonight.
I am Mary Lechtenberg of Franciscan Sister and a member of the Tri-State Coalition almost since its beginning 10 and 1/2 years ago. It started in 2014, and the organization was started by the women religious orders in this area, in the tri-state area, not only Dubuque. And now our membership has expanded to include college students, a UD professor, once in a while, a man joins us as well, but other members of the service organizations in town. We've been quite creative in creating awareness of the human trafficking issue because people say, "It's not happening here, is it?" And I say, "All you have to do is read headlines in the paper to see how many children are abused sexually, how many women are raped, and how many of the abusers get probation." And the abused people have to carry that memory for the rest of their lives. We walk along Central Avenue and go into businesses and sometimes visit them a time or two, the same businesses, and Paul Pates has a program called Iowa Business Against Trafficking. And we just walk in cold and tell them who we are, and we have wonderful conversations with them and encourage them and give them a handout and become a business against trafficking, against human trafficking. So, we certainly appreciate your assistance. Once again, I think this is the 10th year that you've had a proclamation in dedicating January to human trafficking awareness. So, thank you for that.
Well, Sister, thank you for being here, first off, but we sincerely appreciate your unwavering dedication to this for so many years.
We are very passionate about what we do.
Yes.
So, we're having a meeting tomorrow night, and I'll tell them all about you.
And we see the passion and we know it, and we really do appreciate it. So, thank you very much for coming here every year like this and bringing attention to this very, very important issue. So, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
City of Dubuque Proclamation. Whereas by presidential proclamation, each January has been designated National Human Trafficking and Modern Day Slavery Prevention Month. In addition, January 11 has been designated National Human Trafficking Awareness Day. And whereas the issues of sex trafficking and labor trafficking are a violation of human rights, the hope of this proclamation is to raise awareness of this topic. And whereas the city of Dubuque wishes to acknowledge the following organization for its 10th anniversary to raise awareness about human trafficking, the Tri-State Coalition Against Human Trafficking and Modern Day Slavery. And whereas the United Nations Global Plan of Action has three pillars upon which it stands: Protect, Prevent, Prosecute. We invite all residents of Dubuque to educate themselves on this issue and to support these three pillars to help eradicate the problem. And whereas we invite parents, middle and high school students, teachers, and all residents to a free viewing of Maya on Wednesday, January 22, 2025, at 5:30 PM in the Dubuque Phoenix Theater. And whereas human trafficking is a national, state, and local issue, we encourage all businesses to participate in the Iowa Businesses Against Trafficking initiative, as well as involvement in the Coalition's Lunch and Learn program to develop advocacy protocols for survivors. Now therefore, I, Brad M. Kavanaugh, Mayor of the city of Dubuque, Iowa, on behalf of the City Council staff and residents of Dubuque, do hereby proclaim the month of January 2025 as Human Trafficking and Modern Day Slavery Prevention Month. Thank you, Sister, for being here. Thank you, Sister. Adrian, Eric, we have a video rolling up here on our screens. I'm not sure if that's supposed to be happening at this point. Thank you very much.
Well, move on to consent items. At this time, anyone participating in the meeting in person who would like to discuss one of the consent items, please approach the podium when the mayor asks if there is any in-person input and state your name and address. For all remote attendees, please enter your name and address in the chat function, or state your name and address over the phone when the mayor asks if there is any virtual input. If more than one participant would like to speak, then city staff will determine the speaking order of the participants. Please state the item you would like removed from the consent agenda for separate discussion and consideration, and consent items can be found on pages 2 through 3 of the agenda.
All right, thank you, Adrian. Do we have anyone here who would like to remove any of the consent items for separate discussion this evening? I see no one here. Anyone virtually?
No input.
Thank you very much. All right, back to the table, then.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Resnick.
I move to receive and file the documents, adopt the resolutions, and deal with the consent items as recommended.
Second by Farber.
Got a motion by Resnick, second by Farber. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Jones.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
We'll move on to items set for public hearing. We have one, setting a public hearing for the Central Avenue and White Street Traffic Study Recommendation for January 21, 2025.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Sprank.
I motion that we receive and file and set the public hearing for January 21, 2025.
Second.
Got a motion by Sprank, second by Russell. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Jones.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
We'll move on to boards and commissions. We have applicant review for the Building Code Advisory and Appeals Board, Community Development Advisory Commission, and Equity and Human Rights Commission.
All right, thank you, Adrian. Our first up is the Building Code Advisory and Appeals Board. We have one three-year term through January 1, 2027, and one applicant, Michael Shimkus. Do we have anyone here in chambers to address us on this application?
Well, good evening. My name is Michael Shimkus, and I'm a resident of 4917 Twilight Drive here in Dubuque. And I was requested and offered the opportunity to be a part of this committee by Ben Potoff. And I'm a civil engineer, structural engineer. I've got a history of working with the city on projects such as the ICE Arena remediation, Iowa Street Parking Ramp, Southwest Arterial, 14th Street Overpass, the Dubuque Brewing and Malting Building, which I'm sure is one of your favorites and fondest memories of recent history. And I just wanted to have the opportunity to provide some sort of assistance. It seemed like a very good opportunity, and if there's any questions, I would be happy to answer them.
All right. Well, thank you, Michael, for your comments. We appreciate it. Okay. Anyone else to speak to this application? All right, then we move on to the Community Development Advisory Commission. We have one three-year term through February 2027, and then another three-year term through the same February of, oh, sorry, of 2028. We have two applicants. Dean Bowles is the first. Do we have anyone to address us on this application? Seeing no one here, or virtually, then next application is Dale Campbell. Anyone here to address us on this one? Okay. We'll move on then to the Equity and Human Rights Commission. We have two three-year terms through January 1, 2028, and we have three applicants: Rick Baumhofer, Michaela Freiberger, and Tracy Phillipson. Do we have anyone to address us on any of these three applications?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mayor of the members of the City Council and city staff. I am Rick Baumhofer, reside of Siskiyou, Garfield Avenue. I am asking to please be reappointed to the Equity and Human Rights Commission. Mr. Mayor, a few meetings ago, you had mentioned that it is now such a fantastic and exciting time to be a Dubuqueer, and I couldn't agree more, even though I don't play Uker. I wish whoever thought of that slogan back in the 80s, with the last person to leave Dubuque, turn out the lights, could see our city now. The lights are brighter than ever and never going dim. Also, back in the 80s, there was something that did make the lights go pretty dim. I remember very clearly the KKK being here on a couple of occasions and even having rallies right across the street from here. That did not make me angry, but I was very disappointed and ashamed to see my city, my hometown, on national news for that. Dubuque is and should be home to everyone, no matter who you, or what you are, what color you are, what nationality you are, or who you love or support. I know I'm proud to have been born here, raised here, and I'll die here. I have had the honor, thanks to all of you, serving on different boards and commissions over all the years. I must say, though, this is by far the most meaningful commission, though. It does not bring me joy to hear about some people possibly being discriminated against for some reason or another, but it does bring me satisfaction that they definitely now have a place and a group to voice their opinion. Giselle and Anne Marie are phenomenal down at the office, and it's a privilege to work with them. During the short time I have been on this commission, us commission members, we have done several outreach programs in the community, such as Dubuque Fest, Senior Fest, Dubuque Pride, Latino Fest, to inform people that there is such a place to let it be known if they have a concern, and that makes me feel great. As was stated during the last election campaign, and I'm not saying who or what, but we're not going back. We're not going back. Hillary Clinton says something a few years ago, and I won't get it word for word because I did not research it, but it went something like this, and I firmly believe this with all my heart: Equal rights are human rights, and human rights, they're not just for anyone, they are for everyone. I conclude with this: We will never erase completely, excuse me, discrimination, racism, bigotry, or hateful words, but we can, at least all of us, work together to make this a much nicer, more welcome community and world. It really is not that difficult. Like the singer Louis Armstrong always sang, "What a wonderful world," hopefully sooner than later. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Rick, for your comments. Anyone else to address us on any of the Equity and Human Rights Commission applications?
At this time, anyone participating in the meeting in person who would like to discuss one of the public hearing items, please approach the podium when the mayor asks if there is any in-person input for the public hearing you would like to speak to and state your name and address. For all remote attendees, please enter your name and address in the chat function and state your question, or state your name and address over the phone when the mayor asks if there is any virtual input for the public hearing you would like to speak to. If more than one participant would like to speak, then city staff will determine the speaking order of the participants. Public hearing number one is resolution approving a proposed development agreement with Dubuque and Jackson County Habitat for Humanity.
Mr. Mayor. Ms. Russell.
I move to receive and file and adopt the resolution. Second.
Got a motion by Russell and a second by Wethel. Mike, please.
Thank you. Economic Development Director Jill Connors is recommending City Council adopt the resolution approving a development agreement by and between the city of Dubuque and Dubuque and Jackson County Habitat for Humanity. The developer is proposing to create 14 single-family homes adjacent to Mount Pleasant Home. The project is located within the Mount Pleasant Place Urban Renewal Area, which has been designated by the City Council as an economic development area. The developer has indicated the project will be conducted in phases, with Phase 1 representing the creation of six low- and moderate-income housing units. Overall, the project represents a unique opportunity to create affordable, single-family homes within the city of Dubuque. Key elements of the development agreement are as follows: Number one, developer to create 14 single-family homes, two detached garage structures, 15 covered parking spaces, and 18 surface parking spaces by December 31, 2028. Number two, city to award 15 years of tax increment financing incentives in the form of semi-annual rebates. The tax increment rebates are not anticipated to exceed $500,000. The development agreement requires the developer to accept applications from prospective tenants with housing choice vouchers that are otherwise qualify prospective tenants. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. We are on a public hearing to consider City Council adopt a resolution approving a development agreement by and between the city of Dubuque and Dubuque and Jackson County Habitat for Humanity. Do we have anyone in the public here to address us on this this evening? Seeing no one here, is there anyone virtually?
No.
All right, thank you both. All right, seeing no comments from the public, back to the table for any discussion, then.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Mr. Resnick.
Yes, Mr. Van Milligan, so TIF, we've used it in many different ways, and to me, I feel like it's usually connected to some kind of workforce increase or some type of level of investment. So, how is it that we're using it for this purpose now?
So, now, about three years ago, the Greater Dubuque Development Corporation did a study, and that study determined that the city of Dubuque was 1,100 housing units short of what the need was. And the reason the Development Corporation did that study is because they're getting a lot of input from employers that they cannot find employees, and they believe that to have employees, the employees have to have somewhere to live. So, after the city received that study, the mayor and city council adopted a series of incentives to encourage the development of housing, and since those incentives have been adopted, there's now about 2,400 housing units that have either been built already or are on the drawing board based on those incentives. And so, the goal is to grow the city population and to enhance the city workforce. And so, this would be one of those projects that would accomplish that.
Okay, thank you very much. And so, you said probably most, if not all, of the 2,400 projected have some type of TIF or just other kinds of financial help?
Yeah, so it's not all, but it is most. Do have incentive packages offered by the city.
Great, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Other comments, questions? Well, I'll just say for my part that, you know, I know that this, we've talked about this project, this particular project here in chambers before, as we discussed a rezoning not too long ago, or maybe it was a while ago at this point. But we haven't seen anything since, and it's nice to see that this project is moving forward. It's exciting to see housing in this way, and especially coming from an organization like Habitat for Humanity and making more of an impact here in the community. So, I'm happy to see this, happy to vote for it tonight, and looking forward to seeing these houses come up, like the many others that Mike mentioned here in the next few years. All right, well, motion here is to receive and file and adopt the resolution. So, Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Jones.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
Public hearing number two is approving a purchase agreement by and between the city of Dubuque and Tyson's Warehouse LLC, providing for the sale of city-owned real estate.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
Move to receive and file and adopt the resolution.
Second.
Got a motion by Jones, second by Farber. Mike, please.
Thank you. Economic Development Director Jill Connors is recommending City Council adopt the attached resolution approving a proposed purchase agreement by and between the city of Dubuque and Tyson's Warehouse LLC, providing for the sale of city-owned real estate. City staff desire to reacquire .74 acres of the expansion area to create additional right-of-way for South Hickock Road, as well as utilizing soil from the expansion area and an approximately 2.54-acre city-owned parcel immediately south of the expansion area to facilitate city infrastructure improvements immediately east of these parcels. The soil would be used to grade South Hickock Road, as well as a future development pad immediately north of 5955 Chevynale Road. Concurrently, Tyson's has expressed interest in a 2.54-acre parcel south of the expansion area for its operations. Staff have negotiated an agreement with Tyson's Warehouse, which would be of benefit to both the city and Tyson through the sale of the 2.54-acre city-owned parcel to Tyson in exchange for revestment of the .74-acre portion of the expansion area to the city. The parties have agreed on the following: Number one, city will convey the 2.54-acre adjacent parcel to Tyson's for $1 for the future expansion of its future corporate office industrial facility. Number two, Tyson will convey the .74-acre portion of the expansion property to the city for $1. Number three, the city will grade the expansion property, the 2.54-acre adjacent parcel, and the .74-acre portion of the expansion property as part of a mass grading project at no cost to Tyson. Per the agreement, this grading-
this project, this particular project here in chambers before, as we discussed a rezoning not too long ago, or maybe it was a while ago at this point, but we haven't seen anything since, and it's nice to see that this project is moving forward. It's exciting to see housing in this way, and especially coming from an organization like Habitat for Humanity and making more of an impact here in the community. So I'm happy to see this, happy to vote for it tonight, and looking forward to seeing these houses come up, like the many others that Mike mentioned here in the next few years.
All right, well, motion here is to receive and file and adopt the resolution, so Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Jones.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Gassell.
Aye.
And motion passes seven zero.
Public hearing number two is approving a purchase agreement by and between the City of Dubuque and Tyson's Warehouse LLC, providing for the sale of city-owned real estate.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Jones. Move to receive and file and adopt the resolution.
Second.
Got a motion by Jones, second by Farber. Mike, please.
Thank you. Economic Development Director Jill Connors is recommending city council adopt the attached resolution approving a proposed purchase agreement by and between the City of Dubuque and Tyson's Warehouse LLC, providing for the sale of city-owned real estate. City staff desire to reacquire .74 acres of the expansion area to create additional right-of-way for South Heacock Road, as well as utilizing soil from the expansion area and an approximately 2.54 acre city-owned parcel immediately south of the expansion area to facilitate city infrastructure improvements immediately east of these parcels. The soil would be used to grade South Heacock Road, as well as a future development pad immediately north of 5955 Chevynale Road. Concurrently, Tyson's has expressed interest in a 2.54 acre parcel south of the expansion area for its operations. Staff have negotiated an agreement with Tyson's Warehouse, which would be of benefit to both the city and Tyson through the sale of the 2.54 acre city-owned parcel to Tyson in exchange for revestment of the .74 acre portion of the expansion area to the city. The parties have agreed on the following: Number one, city will convey the 2.54 acre adjacent parcel to Tyson's for $1 for the future expansion of its future corporate office industrial facility. Number two, Tyson will convey the .74 acre portion of the expansion property to the city for $1. Number three, the city will grade the expansion property, the 2.54 acre adjacent parcel, and the .74 acre portion of the expansion property as part of a mass grading project at no cost to Tyson. Per the agreement, this grading project must be completed within five years of closing. A funding request for this project has been drafted to be included in a future capital improvement program budget request, as current tax increment financing flows are not yet known. Number four, city will take possession of the graded fill from this grading project from the aforementioned parcels with no payment from either party to the other. Number five, Tyson will grant city an access easement for the grading project. Number six, city intends to construct a roundabout adjacent to the 2.54 acre parcel. City will hold Tyson harmless from and against any and all claims for any property damage arising out of the construction of the roundabout. Number seven, the purchase agreement termination date will be June 30, following the completion of the mass grading project by the city. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. We are on a public hearing to consider city council adopt the attached resolution approving a proposed purchase agreement by and between the City of Dubuque and Tyson's Warehouse LLC, providing for the sale of city-owned real estate. Do we have anyone here in chambers to address us on this item? Seeing no one here, anyone virtually?
No.
Thank you. All right, back to the table then for any discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Ms. Farber.
I move to receive and file and adopt the resolution. Second.
Got a motion by Farber, second by Sprank. Mike, please.
Thank you. Chief Financial Officer Jennifer Larson recommends city council approval of the suggested proceedings for the public hearing on the issuance of selling not to exceed $24,250,000 general obligation bond, Series 2025 ABC.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Farber.
I move to receive and file and adopt the resolution.
Second by Sprank.
Got a motion by Farber, second by Sprank. Mike, please.
Thank you. Chief Financial Officer Jennifer Larson recommends city council approval of the suggested proceedings for the public hearing on the issuance of selling not to exceed $24,250,000 in general obligation bonds. $23,640,000 of the proceeds are intended for projects in the city budget previously approved by the city council, which include fire ambulance replacements, fire cardiac monitors, fire outdoor warning signals, fire portable radio replacements, fire wireless headsets, fire boat replacement, fire community automated external defibrillator implementation, solid waste collection vehicles, airport taxiway improvements, fire station generators, fire station six roof replacement, fire station tuck pointing, fire administrative office update, fire bunk rooms, fire mechanical and electrical systems, fire HVAC replacement, fire station improvements, fire training burn tower improvements, fire ladder pumper truck replacements, ABC Supply building deconstruction, ice arena dehumidification, smart parking system, parking ramp major maintenance repairs, federal building renovations, and Iowa amphitheater on Schmidt Island. $610,000 is intended to provide funds for bond issuance costs and contingency for fluctuations in the bond market for interest rates, bond issuance costs, capitalized interest, and change in project costs. Although the city is selling general obligation bonds to support the projects, repayment of the debt will be local option sales tax, refuse collection fund, Dubuque Racing Association, and Greater Downtown Tax Increment Financing District. As to the non-urban renewal essential corporate purpose portion of the issue, the proceedings are prepared to show as a first step the receipt of any oral or written objections from any resident or property owner to the proposed action of the city council to issue the bonds. A summary of objections received or made, if any, should be attached to the proceedings. After all objections have been received and considered, if the city council decides not to abandon the proposal to issue the bonds, a form of resolution follows that should be introduced and adopted entitled, "Resolution Taking Additional Action on Proposals to Enter Into Loan Agreements and Combining Loan Agreements." As to the general corporate purpose and urban renewal essential corporate purpose portions of the issue, the proceedings are prepared on the basis that no petition will be filed asking that the question of issuing the bonds to be submitted to the qualified electors of the city. The proceedings refer to the fact that the hearing was held and that no petition had been filed. The mayor will then declare the hearing on the issuance of the bond as be closed. Immediately following each hearing, a resolution is to be introduced and adopted, taking additional action for the issuance. If a valid petition is filed, bond council should be notified as soon as possible, since the hearing proceedings will have to be revised to cover the action taken by the city council in either abandoning the proposal to issue the bonds or directing the county commissioner to call a special election upon the question of issuing the bonds. The Code of Iowa provides that any resident or property owner of the city may appeal the decision to take additional action to issue the bonds to the district court of a county in which any of the part of the city is located within 15 days after such additional action is taken, but that the additional action is final and conclusive unless the court finds that the city council exceeded its authority. In the event an appeal is filed by any resident or property owner, bond council must be notified as soon as possible. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. We are on a public hearing to consider city council approval of the suggested proceedings for the public hearing on the issuance of selling not to exceed $24,250,000 in general obligation bonds. Do we have anyone here from the public to address us on this item? Seeing no one here, anyone virtually?
No.
Thank you both. All right, back to the table then for any discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Ms. Farber.
Mike, if I could ask either you or Jennifer to just explain the next steps in terms of the fact that it looks like there has been no discussion on a petition, or it's been attested that there have been no filings or no petitions, what is the next step in the timeframe that we can and the citizens can expect the bond to be issued?
Good evening, Jennifer Larson, Chief Financial Officer. So the next steps are we're working with Moody's Investor Service to be rated for the bonds. So that will happen towards the end of this month. We should have a rating come out January 23, and then we will prepare a document called the official statement, which potential buyers will review, and that will need to go to council for approval prior to being released. So the electronic bidding, the official statement, will need to go to council at another council meeting, most likely either the second meeting in January or in early February, and then once that's approved, then we're slated for the actual sale to be held March 3. So the sale will actually close at 10:00 a.m. on March 3, and then the results will be brought to the city council meeting that night.
Okay, and just for general information purposes, the interest rate that will be considered on the coupon for those that actually purchase the bonds will be determined probably by the broker dealer with your concurrence.
Yes.
Prior to the second phase before it goes to market, correct?
The interest rate will actually be finalized with the bids that are received on March 3.
On March 3.
Yep, and those will be the results brought to city council.
Okay, great, I appreciate that. Thank you, that's a great explanation, appreciate it.
Yeah, Mr. Sprank.
Thank you. Since you're still here, Jenny. Question, will this affect our bond rating by any chance, since we're taking out more bonds?
No, actually, we had a preliminary call with Moody's Investor Service, and everything as far as financial ratios and our debt load is actually very positive. We've been reducing debt very rapidly in the City of Dubuque, so there were no concerns from the rating analysts from that standpoint, and their initial, I guess, review of our rating was that we would be affirmed at a double A2 rating. So that is what our expectation will be for January 23.
Thank you.
Mr. Resnick.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. So, Mr. Van Milligan, I think it's a great memo, and all of these items are critical for our citizens for service, but you just mentioned, Jenny Larson just mentioned that we are reducing our debt load, and I was hoping that we could maybe refer to that in the memo to let the citizens know that our debt reduction policy since 2015 has been to pay off more debt than any new borrowing, and that has been very successful. And I was just wondering if we were going to do significant borrowing like this, then maybe an update about how that, our debt reduction policy is affected by this, and she just said it's really, we've been doing very well at reducing our debt load, but it wasn't mentioned in this. I think that would be great, and I'd love to have your opinion about, it'd be great for the citizens to know that with this important borrowing that we have to do, because we don't have this money in the bank, it's a ton of money, but we are very responsible in how we deal with the debt.
Yes, and we'll provide that information in detail then when we bring this back to the city council, but my recollection is that of the 11 cities in the state of Iowa with a population greater than 50,000, that we have the fourth lowest use of our debt capacity, and as you mentioned, since 2016, we've gone down from 90% usage to, I believe it's 35%?
36.
36% of our statutory debt limit, so, and as Chief Financial Officer Jennifer Larson mentioned, that in their meeting with Moody's, they seem to be pleased with the performance of the City of Dubuque related to our debt, and you remember that while they're saying that it looks like a good chance our current bond rating will be affirmed, in other words, they'll keep the current bond rating. It was just about 18 months ago when we did a debt issuance where they actually increased our bond rating to the current rating, I think it was about that time period.
Correct.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any others?
And I have one quick question for you, Jenny, before you turn, sorry. This is a pretty common occurrence for us, right? I mean, would you say on an annual basis, give or take, I mean, we put out some sort of bond issuance to be able to pay for some of these capital projects and things that we're doing?
Sure, so during our annual budget process, as part of that process, we do plan for what debt issuances will be part of our capital improvement plan. We did not issue debt in 2024, it was delayed until 2025, so we're actually doing a little bit of catch-up on our debt issuances, issuing for both projects that were planned in '24 as well as 2025, but yes, we typically issue at least once per fiscal year.
Okay, all right. Didn't realize we didn't do it in '24. Time flies, I guess, doesn't it? All right, well, thank you very much, Jenny, appreciate it. All right, well, motion here on the table is to receive and file and adopt this resolution. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Jones.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Gassell.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
We'll move on to public input. At this time, anyone participating in the meeting may address the city council on the action items on the agenda or on matters under the control of the city council. For all in-person attendees, please approach the podium and state your name and address when the mayor asks if there is any in-person input. For all remote attendees, please enter your name and address in the chat function, or state your name and address over the phone when the mayor asks if there is any virtual input. If more than one participant would like to speak, then city staff will determine the speaking order of the participants. Individual remarks are limited to five minutes, and the overall public input period is limited to 30 minutes. Under the Iowa Open Meetings Law, the city council can take no formal action on comments given during public input or that do not relate to the action items on the agenda.
Thank you, Adrian. I see we have public input this evening.
Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the council, city manager, city attorney, and city clerk, my name is Rick Dickinson. I have the pleasure of serving as the president of Greater Dubuque Development Corporation. I'll be brief. First of all, as you would expect, our office was very involved in discussions, negotiations between the city and Tyson's, Tyson's store. If you can't find it there, you really don't need it. We're proud to have them be part of our family. If you want to look up in the dictionary Corporate Citizen, you should see the Tyson's picture next to it. We thank them for this agreement with the city, and it will pay dividends, not just for Tyson's and the city, but for the taxpayers and improvements that will take place at Dubuque Industrial Center West. I also want to thank you both as president of Greater Dubuque Development Corporation, also as a taxpayer, for investing in our community with the bond issuance that you just approved in that public hearing. We need to reinvest in our community constantly. Communities that do that will prosper and grow, those that do not will decline. Thanks for that. And while you're looking up Corporate Citizen, although the action hasn't been taken yet, I want to thank Dubuque Bank and Trust in their cooperation with the City of Dubuque and being a great partner, and it's that kind of corporate citizenship that separates Dubuque from the pack. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick, for your comments. Any other public input this evening? Seeing none here, anything virtually?
No.
Okay.
No input.
All right, okay, we can move on to action items then, please, Adrian.
Action item number one is DBNT Interest Earnings Press Release.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Jones. I move to receive and file. Second. Got a motion by Jones, second by Resnick. Mike, please.
Thank you. The media release is titled, "DBNT Pays City Over $2 Million in Interest," and then it goes on to read, "The City of Dubuque and Dubuque Bank and Trust, DBNT, have collaborated to successfully resolve issues related to interest earnings owed to the city. DBNT recently paid the city $2,53,691 in interest earnings following a review of a banking services agreement between the city and DBNT from 2007 to the present, and the city's accounts covered by that agreement. An analysis conducted by the city finance department and DBNT confirmed the 2007 agreement required DBNT to pay the city an interest rate based on the Federal Reserve rate. When Federal Reserve interest rates declined in 2020, DBNT paid a fixed rate higher than called for by the agreement. However, DBNT did not adjust the city's interest rate when the Federal Reserve interest rates began rising after a prolonged period of decline. Due to changes in personnel at DBNT and the City of Dubuque, this oversight was not identified at the time. Following a competitive selection process that included eight different banking proposals, the city recently awarded a new banking services agreement to DBNT. It was during the preparation of the new banking services recommendation for the November 18, 2024 city council meeting that city staff identified the discrepancy from the agreement that was currently in place. It was brought to DBNT's attention and quickly resolved. City staff and DBNT are now finalizing the terms of the new agreement, which will include additional policies and procedures to ensure agreement compliance, including: The finance department has assigned a staff member to closely monitor accounts to ensure the correct rates are applied for the agreement. The purpose of the city's Investment Oversight Advisory Commission is being amended to include cash management responsibilities, providing another layer of review. The implementation of quarterly meetings between DBNT and city finance staff will be scheduled to discuss city accounts and any new financial opportunities within the city accounts. And if you don't mind, besides reading the media release, which I just completed, I do want to read an email which I sent to city staff on Sunday, January 5. "We owe a deep debt of gratitude to Chief Financial Officer Jennifer Larson, Finance Manager Brian DeMoss, Purchasing and Risk Management Coordinator Tony Brightbach, and City Attorney Krenna Brumwell for working with DBNT to get this $2.1 million in back interest to the city. We also owe thanks to DBNT for immediately correcting the error once it was pointed out to them. I have been asked how will the money be used. As a one-time revenue, it will generally be budgeted through the fiscal year '26 Capital Improvement Program budget process, though there might be some exceptions, where the city council will make decisions in April 2025 as part of the budget process, keeping in mind the city council priorities. Thank you, Jennifer Larson, Brian DeMoss, Tony Brightbach, and Krenna Brumwell."
Thank you, Mike. Well, I'll start out the discussion here and then open it up to anybody else who has anything else to say, but, you know, what started out here as a mistake ended up as what I think is an excellent example of a community partnership. I mean, it really did. And as Mike pointed out in the release that was sent out to the community, this all kind of happened as we were, this was discovered as we were going through the process and as our city staff were mentioned, were looking at this RFP process and doing some research into that, and identified that the correct amount, in discussions with DBNT as a partner, identified that the correct amount that the city is owed was the $2,53,691 that we are receiving here. That is the correct amount. In the midst of that discussion, we did have some discussion here in chambers as we talked And I think it caused a little bit of confusion in the community because we didn't get the opportunity at that moment, because we weren't done researching all this yet, to, to identify what the correct number was. So I know that we've gotten a number of calls, we've had a number of discussions with city council members about, you know, what is the city actually owed? And I just want to make it really clear to everybody that this number that we're saying tonight, the $2 million, just over $2 million, is the number that the, the city is owed by DB&amp;T in this. So, and, and I do, I just want to make it really clear, and I don't think there was, I, I think that unfortunately, the amount that was, that was mentioned was just inaccurate based on the, the variables that weren't entirely clear yet. So we, we were able to identify what that accurate number was. And I appreciate that we were able to have this discussion in this way. I, I have to say, this is an excellent example, first of all, of good government in practice. And I think we saw some really good work done here to be able to identify money that was missing and say, "We need, we are owed this, and we need to figure out how to, how to make sure that this works." And it's also a great example of a community partner working with us and working effectively and efficiently, and, and quite honestly, fairly, to make sure that what the taxpayers of the City of Dubuque were owed and what the City of Dubuque was owed was returned to us. And I think that one of the things I think we need to recognize as we do this is mistakes happen. They, they happen all the time. Sometimes they happen with big businesses and big checking accounts. And what's really important is that we have to be able to work together as a community to fix that when we notice it and when we identify it. And it absolutely happened here, and it happened at a speed at which most things don't tend to happen in government. So I really appreciate how everybody got together to be able to do this and, and make this, make this work. So to our city finance staff in particular, really appreciate the work that you did here. Mike, your leadership on this as we, as we went through with this. And then folks from DB&amp;T who I know are joining us here tonight too. This was, it was really, I think, just an excellent example of a community partnership and how that should work. So thank you very much for the work that you did here. In the end, it was also a really good opportunity to be able to say, okay, this happened. What are we going to do differently so this doesn't happen again? And we've, I think, laid out an excellent plan for this to be able to occur. Mike, you mentioned these things. I'm just going to repeat them because I think they're worth repeating. We're going to assign a staff member in our finance department to closely monitor accounts and ensure that correct rates are applied per the agreement that we now have in place and that we're finalizing with DB&amp;T, the next five-year agreement that we have. Number two is we're going to change the purpose, and this is actually coming up in another action item here. So we need to decide this as a city council. So I know I'm getting a little ahead of ourselves, but this is what the intent is, is to create another part of the Investment Oversight Advisory Commission, or another task, which will include cash management responsibilities and to be able to provide another layer of review there. Personally, I think that's a great idea. I look forward to talking about that in the next action item, too. And then the implementation of quarterly meetings between DB&amp;T and city finance staff to be scheduled to discuss city accounts and new financial opportunities within the city's accounts. So I think we're setting up a really good process to make sure that this kind of thing doesn't occur again, because I do think that it happened rather innocently, but it, but it did happen. And we need to recognize that, and we need to fix it. So what I'm seeing here is that that's exactly what we're doing. We identified a problem, we fixed that problem, we're making sure that problem doesn't happen again. I can't think of a much better example of how we can make things work well for the City of Dubuque and the people who live here. So thank you to everybody who was involved, and really do appreciate the work. Let's open it up to any other discussion or questions. Mr. Jones?
Had some great comments put together, but they weren't that great.
Oh, that's kind of...
You summed it up very nicely. It happened. We should have seen it sooner. The bank should have seen it sooner. But as soon as everybody saw it, everybody scrambled to fix it. And I'm not sure who it was that said, "It matters less how you got here as how we're getting, moving forward." And I think we proved that in this circumstance, and my hats off to everybody engaged with this, this process. And you're exactly right. We, we stumbled. We found a better process to go forward. Nobody's owed anything. We, we were dealing with honorable people on both sides of the question who couldn't wait to help us fix it. So, thank you. And to our team, thank you, the DB&amp;T team, and let's move on.
Thanks, Mr. Jones. Any other discussion, Ms. Wethel?
I just wanted to make one comment as I feel that it relates to my healthcare background, and this will make sense, I promise. There's something called just culture in healthcare. And when an error is made, and of any kind, whether it is an error that resulted in a bad outcome or an error that was caught before an outcome that was negative happened, there's a culture in which you report it. And when you do that, what you do is you end up creating processes in the future to avoid it from happening again. And that's exactly what we're doing. And so I know I spoke to a number of people in the community regarding this in November when the conversation first started. And I, at that time, tried to say, "We're asking questions, and we're trying to create processes. And I feel like we'll have more information for you, and this is the information that we were waiting for. And so please know that these processes are not meant to be in any way secretive. They are actually meant to be accurate." And I feel that I'm quite proud of our relationship with our banking partner, our exceptional staff who spent hours going through many contracts, many, just a great deal of information to make sure that we did this and we did it right. So, thank you. Thank you, Mayor, for your leadership on this, and of course, city manager. I think it went well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wethel. All right. Okay. Well, thank you, everyone, for your comments. The action item here is just to receive and file. So Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Jones.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
That motion passes seven-zero.
Action item number two is Code of Ordinances Amendment Title II, Chapter III, Investment Oversight Advisory Commission.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
I move to receive and file the communications and further move that the requirement that a proposed ordinance be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting, which is to be finally passed, be suspended.
Second. Motion by Jones, second by Resnick. Mike, please.
Thank you. Chief Financial Officer Jennifer Larson is recommending approval to amend Code of Ordinances Title II, Chapter III, Investment Oversight Advisory Commission. This amendment would change the title of the commission to the Investment and Cash Management Advisory Commission, add to review internal cash management practices and external agreements regarding the Banking Services Agreement, U.S. Treasuries, and Certificates of Deposits, and to recommend, as needed, changes in the cash management practices to the city council to the Purposes Section 232 of the ordinance, and add to review the city's internal cash management practices and external agreements regarding the Banking Services Agreement, U.S. Treasuries, and Certificates of Deposits for compliance with agreement terms and conditions to the Powers Section of the ordinance 2313. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. Do we have any discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Farber.
I think that based on the previous conversation about the partnership with DB&amp;T and all of the processes and review that we have now in order, that this is just another example of the prudent and good fiduciary management that we will have going forward. And with appreciation for the commission for doing all of this work in the future, that we are expanding their purview here as well. But I think the, the steps taken, the due diligence, and the fact that we have more eyes to share comments with Jennifer and her team, I think, is another good lever to have as we go through this process. So just want to thank everybody in advance for the good work.
Thank you, Ms. Farber. All right, seeing no other discussion here. Motion is to receive and file. We have the three readings. I'm sorry, yes, receive and file. We have the three readings. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Jones.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Motion passes seven-zero.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
I move final consideration and passage of the ordinance.
Second. Motion by Jones, second by Resnick. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Jones.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Motion passes seven-zero.
Action item number three is Mayor and City Council Appointments to Boards and Committees.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Rousell.
I move to receive and file and discuss with council members.
Second by Sprank.
Got a motion by Rousell, second by Sprank. Okay. Adrian, did you have anything to add to this before we begin? I know that you...
Yeah, just, just for background context, I'll just say that because it's the first meeting of the year, the mayor and city council traditionally review all board and committee assignments just to see if you would like to make any changes. And any changes that you do decide to make, the city clerk's office team will notify the appropriate board or committee staff.
Great. Thank you, Adrian. Okay. So kind of just open it up. This is what we usually do in the beginning of years, open it up for discussion. If anybody has any changes or things you want to talk about more with where you are in terms of boards. I would like to not have any more. I think that'd be enough for now. We're good. So, no, I'm very, very honored to be able to serve on each of these, and I think we all are. It's a, it's a great opportunity to be in the community and work with these different organizations that have this relationship with the city. And I appreciate that we go through this process every year to be able to talk about it. And I would assume that silence means we're happy with what's on the page. So as long as that assumption is correct.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Jones.
I'll go ahead and make some noise. I think all of you are doing fantastic work on these assignments. People think you get elected city council, you come down here twice a month, and you're done. You're not. All these other things come with it. And I think each of us is, knows what we're doing on those commissions and boards and are being very effective and are moving the community forward and bringing information back here for the whole community to hear about with some regularity. I'm very proud of all of you and the work that we do in this, these capacities.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Yeah, Ms. Rousell.
I'd just like to give a special shout-out to the Dubuque Main Street. That's one of my assignments, and I have really, really enjoyed that particular assignment. I've learned a lot about downtown businesses and things that are going on. And it's just a great opportunity to have really good insights into what's happening in our community on that board and just in all the boards that we serve on.
Thank you, Ms. Rousell. All right. So I'm not hearing any changes this year. We are pretty happy with where we are. Okay. Well, great. And I agree with Mr. Jones. I think we're doing a great job on each of these. I do appreciate hearing from each of you during council member reports and, and other times, just about what's going on in each of the, the various boards that we're serving on and different groups that we work with. Okay. Motion here was to receive and file and have that brief discussion. So Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Jones.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
And motion passes seven-zero.
Action item number four is Heart Partnership Video.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Sprank.
I'm a motion that we receive and file and watch the video.
Second.
Got a motion by Sprank, second by Wethel. Eric, we can roll the video, please.
It's an experience that takes time and patience and effort.
I didn't want to really express myself, but as soon as I got here, it just changed.
I'm around people who motivate me and who tell me I can do it. It only puts me to want to do better.
When someone knows they're doing something bigger than themselves, when they're a part of something that's bigger than themselves, it changes them. Our motto has always been, from the very start, restoring place, restoring people, and it's truly what happens. Heart Partnership consists of two main branches. One is Heart Building Futures, which is youth programming for youth that risk dropping out of high school. And the other is Heart Building Dubuque, which is our adult programming for adults with barriers to employment. There are lots of partners that make this come together. The City of Dubuque is proud to be a partner. We're able to support that program in a lot of different ways, whether that's through financial, whether that's through grant opportunities, whether that's through providing homes for the students and adults to work on. Not one partner can do all of it. And I think the Heart Partnership really is this great model to say, there's financial partners, there's education partners, there's partners that are looking at different grant opportunities and really thinking about how that makes that huge impact. We need all those pieces together.
In Heart Building Futures, the main partners are the City of Dubuque, Dubuque Community School District, Northeast Iowa Community College, and Four Mounds.
Not all students fit in the traditional framework, and that's okay. So what Heart does is we try to find the best method to reach the students.
Students that are in high school spend part of their day on a job site and part of the day in the classroom.
So we teach you the theories of some of the principles for construction and home renovation, and then we actually come out and make them applicable so that the students can learn by doing.
Once I came on the tour, I just kind of knew this was the place for me, where I needed to be. They took me in as one of their own as soon as I got here. I did not know what I was doing coming here, but now this is what I want to do for my career.
While they are on the job site, they're earning articulated credit through Northeast Iowa Community College. They're also earning a small stipend. When they graduate, they can use that stipend for educational or career goals. And if they choose to do that, it's matched by the DuPaco Community Credit Union.
With DuPaco, they teach us the financial lit part, so we know what we're doing when we get out of high school, financial-wise. Learn a little bit of everything, and it just, you just feel better about yourself after doing hard work. I've learned a lot of skills on carpentry. I have more people skills. And now I'm a lot more confident, for sure.
Heart Building Dubuque is adult programming for adults with barriers to employment in partnership with Northeast Iowa Community College, Four Mounds, and the City of Dubuque. Students are enrolled in Northeast Iowa Community College's Career Pathway Certificate Programs. And they're hired as employees by Four Mounds. And we do the same thing on a restoration site. They're getting authentic, hands-on training. But while they're doing that, they also get career and life planning.
I started off about two years ago as a student at Four Mounds, and I worked my way up to being an employee, having a leadership kind of role and just teaching others new things. It's been a progressive, like, journey through everything I've done. And I've set some goals over the, like, last two years. One is budgeting. Also, I've been working on mindset. Becoming what I want to be in the future and growing towards that is something big, and I'm working my way towards it, bit by bit.
And so we also have the Home Modifications, which is our newest pathway for adults. That is in partnership with the City of Dubuque with their Aging in Place program. The City of Dubuque, I think, comes up with a lot of creative ways to support the partnership. One of the ways is through our Community Development Block Grant Funds, which was able to support the Heart Partnership and their expansion of programs. Specifically, the Home Modification Program, which allows elderly in our community that want to stay in their homes but may need slight modifications to them. So that could be anything from handrails to bathroom cutouts to ramps. And Heart Partnership is able to then go into those homes and do those small modifications. And they may seem small to us, but they are huge impacts for people that are living in those homes. The folks that we're working for are truly grateful to be able to stay in their homes. Students work with a job coach. They're really getting mentorship from the staff. And they are just speaking life into the students every single day.
He brought us something that I never heard before. He was like, "We like a family." It's not like just a manager and an employee. It's really like a big brother and little brother type of relationship with most of my job coaches. They drive me to want to do better and push me to want to do better.
It really switched a lot around with me. They taught me so much since I've been here. They're definitely my mentors.
We are impacting not just individual students. We're impacting the entire community.
If we have more people giving, then it makes it just that much easier to have even a more beautiful community. I've been able to see how it looks through every phase of the project. And just looking at it is like, wow, the students themselves, they built this one to make it last. This house was made with love, and it came from the heart.
I wouldn't be here without the Heart Partnership. I mean, we always just help each other out and build each other up. It's just a completely different journey than you would have ever expected it to be. If you look for where we all came from, like, we're so, we're so different from where we are now. It goes beyond just working. It just brings us all together, and we learned so much being here. And it adds more to us.
Hey, I love it here. We have people who believe in you. It's going to drive me to want to do better throughout my future. And I acquire enough skills that I need to be able to get a better job. Anything is possible when you have a crowd behind you.
Wow, we've talked about the Heart Program a lot, but I've never seen it encapsulated in a video that good before. And that was just, that was fantastic, to be able to understand not just what it does and what programs are involved, but the impact that it has on people. I think that's, I love that line at the end, too, "Anything's possible when you have a crowd behind you." That's a pretty good line. That's a pretty good one. Yeah, that was great. So good work on that, everybody. We appreciate the partnership with the Heart Program, and that was a great way to describe it. All right, motion here is to receive and file, watch that video. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Jones?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Wethel?
Aye.
Rousell?
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
Action item number five is Lincoln Playground CDBG Project Ribbon Cutting Video.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Rousell.
I move to receive and file and watch another great video.
Got a motion by Rousell, second by Jones. Go ahead and roll that video, Eric. My kids are pretty far gone now from Lincoln. I've got one, eighth grader is the youngest, but it's been, it's been great for the neighborhood. I mean, it's just such a great addition to the Lincoln neighborhood, and I spent a lot of time on that playground, so it looks very, very different, very, very different from what it was. So I know all the families are very appreciative, and the whole neighborhood is. So thank you for everybody who was involved in that. It's a great partnership.
Mr. Mayor, that was an event you couldn't be at, so I was serving as mayor for town at the time. I got to go up there for that opening and ribbon cutting and meet some of the kids, and meet some of the parents and the staff, and everything you said once again was spot on. It's a great project, cathartic to the whole neighborhood.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Jones. All right, motion here, Mr. Receive and File, watch that video. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Jones?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Wethel?
Aye.
Rousell?
Aye.
That motion passes 7-0.
Next, our council member reports.
All right, council member reports this evening.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Mr. Jones.
Tough week for Dubuque. The nation is mourning the loss of President Carter, Dubuque and the nation are mourning the loss of Greg Gumbel, Alora Salamu had a lot of outreach in the community, locally, Dwayne Hagerty, a guy who loved historic preservation so much, that he spent the last years of his life showing the rest of us how to do it, how to make it work. Cindy Knones Byrne brought us some art, brought us some humor, and it didn't hurt that she married one of the funniest guys alive back when he was alive. Made her funnier, but we're gonna miss her. Morgan Fraser was a man on a mission his whole life. Closer to, smaller group, but one of my theater buddies, George Holland, everybody saw at the Grand, and if you didn't see him there, you caught him working at Bell Tower, passed this week. A former firefighter I worked with, Lloyd Gudenkauf, who left the fire department to build homes, and built a lot of them. Who hasn't heard of Gudenkauf Construction, passed this week. So, pretty tough time. On a happier note, I got, I went to a Dubuque Main Street check presentation Friday at Gaia Waxing Studio. It's not open yet, but it's going to be in the old flower shop at 12th and Main that sat vacant for a few years. And it's just buzzing in there, a lot of renovation going on. She's going to have some other tenants there, but it was $10,000 check presentation via Main Street from a Dubuque County swap grant, and certainly helps that small business to jump forward. Couldn't help but feel good about Dubuque if you read all of the great summations of the top news stories from Dubuque in the Telegraph Herald recently, and they nailed that. Congratulations to them, and also congratulations to them and their fantastic choice of William and Trellinger as a Dubuque sort of citizen. Who stays for that many years in a community like this? Well, I guess there are no communities like this. Who stays in a comparable community for that long as a symphony orchestra conductor? Lots of something special's going on in that community and in that orchestra. And lastly, I want to point out, if you haven't picked up your 365, there's a great article in here, Smart Growth Cool Things. It talks about all the cool things coming soon to Dubuque, and it's just fabulous. This one's free, go get it. It's on just about every street corner, so that's what I got.
You pretty much said it all there, Mr. Jones. Appreciate that. Yeah, Mr. Sprank.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Usually, the first week of the month between council meetings and everything else, I also will be attending three of my Neighborhood Association meetings, and there seems to be, the discussion that Adrian's helping me out with is communication amongst council, amongst the city, and how citizens are getting their input. So it's going to be the discussion that I'll kind of try to talk to our citizens, to be like, "How are you getting your information?" Because there seems to be a disconnect some days, and some days there isn't. So, that's all I got. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sprank. Ms. Wethel.
Well, I went down on New Year's Eve with an eight-year-old to the Q Casino Island Social. We partook of the island's social side, and I will tell you, it was fantastic. We did duckpin bowling, we had dinner, we did the arcade, and we saw so many families down there. So it was really great to see that investment already paying dividends on creating a space for families to enjoy themselves. The following day, Friends of Minds of Spain, for which I have the privilege to serve, organizes a New Year's Day hike every year, and my children don't complain, but they do go, and the minute they get out of the car, they're so excited to be there, as are over 200 people again that showed up this year. So it was a great hike. Put it on your calendars for next year. You guys had so much fun afterwards. We have cookies, hot cocoa, and just hats off to the Friends of Minds of Spain for getting it organized. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wethel. What a cool event. I mean, really, it's a great opportunity every New Year. Yeah, well, Mr. Jones said all of it. You know, you didn't mention something. You mentioned most years, though, and that Special Olympics is coming up next week. Yeah, if you want to take an opportunity to talk about it, I know I get to be there for the welcome this year, but...
Sweet. Well, I'll see you there in a different role. I'll be down there with East Dubuque Drum Corps for the opening ceremonies. The opening ceremony is our Monday night at the Grand River Center. It's all indoors these days. We kind of figured out that having a bunch of kids standing outside, waiting for something to happen on a cold night in December and January in Dubuque, Iowa, isn't a fond memory that they take home. So bringing it all indoors makes it a lot fonder and a lot easier, because they'll get plenty of chances to go freeze at sundown and not doing the events. That's another kind of notable thing. Two Dubuquers were recently honored by Special Olympics Iowa for their lifetime achievements. Both are no longer with us. One was my dear friend, my campaign manager for many years to run for city council, Paul Gurrell, who was not quite a founding member, but the second year of the Special Olympics was in Dubuque. He was chair of the event, and by the third or fourth year, he talked me into co-chairing it for many years. We had a ball with that. The other was a gentleman named Powers, who coached a team for many, many years, and had a challenged athlete in his family that he made opportunities for. Just a great group of people. So I'll see you there.
Yeah.
You must be all invited.
Yeah, it's just such a wonderful event to have here in Dubuque, and I'm always excited to go every single year. So, absolutely. Well, just a couple things on my end. You know, it's, there's always so much that occurs in these weeks that we're off from seeing one another, but I'm thinking more ahead, actually, in this particular time. You know, there was a great piece in the Telegraph Herald this past week about the 40 years of the DRA, originally known as Dubuque Racing Association, and we have a celebration of that 40 years coming up here this weekend, and very excited to be able to talk more about that and celebrate that story, but then really think ahead. I mean, that's really what this is all about at this point, so I'm very excited to be a part of all of that, and I know we all are. And then by the time we meet again, for our next meeting, the Iowa Legislature will have gone into session. So the 13th is the first day for the Iowa Legislature. I want to, first of all, say thank you to all the legislators who have, I've had the opportunity to meet with from our region here before the legislature, before the session starts. Usually have a one-on-one meeting with each legislator if possible, and have been able to do that with almost everybody. So very appreciative that we have such strong partnerships with our legislators here in the region, and looking forward to that continuing as the session gets started. I'm already thinking of identifying some days where I might be able to make the trip to Des Moines, to be able to be there in person and talk to them, and then also spend some time with them when they're here. And I encourage everybody in the community to reach out to your legislator at this point. This is the moment to be able to talk to them and talk about what's important to you, because as the session gets rolling, things move really quickly. And I know that each one of us will be having those conversations throughout the session, too, and really trying to advocate for what the people of Dubuque really need here and the things that we're hearing, because we are on a level that, you know, we really are in a pretty honored position to be able to be so close to what people are doing and what people need here in the city. That's just the beauty of being on the city council, is that you get to see people on a daily basis. You literally talk to them in the grocery store. Everybody always jokes that that's the thing, that you go to the grocery store and you have a conversation with them. It actually happens. That's when you have these meetings, is in the grocery store and the restaurants that we go to. I love that opportunity to be able to do that every single day that we're living right here in the community. So we have that special place closest to the people that we represent, and I think it's important that we share that information and share the desires and the needs of those, of the folks that we represent, the folks that are also representing them in the Iowa Legislature. So I'm looking forward to continuing that in the next 100 days here. Well, we do have a closed session this evening, so I will entertain a motion, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
I move the city council going to closed session according to Chapter 21.5 of the Code of Iowa to discuss possible sale of real estate.
Second.
We have a, and it was, you said purchase or sale of real estate there, Mr. Jones?
Well, that's what I meant to say.
Yep, okay, perfect, yeah. I figured purchase might be important to include in that, yeah. So I had a motion by Jones, second by Rousell. For the record, the attorney the city council will consult with on the record, are the items to be discussed in closed session, is City Attorney Colonel Brumwell. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Jones?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Wethel?
Aye.
Rousell?
Aye. Motion passes 7-0. We are in closed session.